You're not going to talk about it.
A parkway?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna open the meeting with a short prayer and a salute to our flag. Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may he watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Terry, notice of publication?
Yes, Mayor, take notice that this special meeting of the mayor and council has been advertised in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call?
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Grillo.
Here.
Gilpatrick. Lembo.
Here.
Melendez. Novak.
Okay, so this is a special meeting tonight to hear from primarily the residents about whether or not they would, whether or not they're in favor of retail sales of recreational marijuana. This is not about medicinal marijuana. This is strictly about recreational marijuana. So I think at the moment, I don't think there are any resident, Kenny, did you sign? Did you want to speak? Okay. Okay. So that being said, I have, let me call up Ed Grimes. Okay, Ed, so you know, there's a, we're not gonna engage in dialogue. This is a listening meeting. So what we're interested in is what you have to say, and there's a five-minute time limitation. Okay?
Thank you, Mr.
So if you'd say your name and the town that you're from, Ed?
My name is Edward Grimes. I'm putting my address as 234 Chaucer in Old Bridge because we have property in Old Bridge. I'm obvious there. I take issue with your police chief, a lot of what he had to say. On our ignorance is no excuse tour, we've gone to over a hundred police stations. I've talked to about two hundred police about this issue. And the problem is that your police chief cannot be objective legally because when I talk to cops, and I know a lot of good cops out there, when they talk to me off the record about legalization, it's off the record because they cannot legally come out for something that's federally illegal. They cannot advocate for something that's illegal. So basically, your chief cannot be objective when he's talking about cannabis. Either can your city attorney, by the way. Your city attorney cannot talk about legalization if he feels that way because it's illegal federally, so ethically, he can't talk about that. So we need to take that with a grain of salt when the chief says these things. The chief cannot come out for job protection for his own officers. It's a no-brainer that you'd want to have job protection for your officers if they use cannabis, but your chief cannot come out for that because legally, his hands are tied. He's handcuffed to say those things if he feels that way. So the objectivity is out the door with that. I, in my travels in the last five years of our police stations, there was a police chief that died in Bergen County. You may know who he was. He died, and in the last months of his life, he was a medical cannabis patient. He didn't want anybody to know he was a medical cannabis patient because of the stigma with cannabis, and he didn't want anybody to know because of all the people he arrested during his career for cannabis, and now he's using cannabis to help save his life at the end. One thing that was missing from the rhetoric that I heard last, two weeks ago, was the rhetoric from the 20th century. Law enforcement in the 20th century used racism and sexism to promote the drug war, and they went in front of Congress, and Congress ate this stuff up. Our top cop said marijuana causes darkies to think they're as good as white men. The primary reason to outlaw marijuana is its defect on the degenerate races. Marijuana influences Negroes to look white people in the eye, step on white men's shadows, and look at white women twice. There are over 100,000 total marijuana smokers in the U.S. Most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, entertainers. Their satanic music, jazz, and swing result from marijuana use. This marijuana causes white women to seek sexual relations with Negroes, entertainers, and others. Marijuana leads to pacifism and communist brainwashing. The Nixon White House has two enemies, the anti-war left and black people. We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be against the war or black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and blacks with heroin, and then condemning both heavily, we could arrest their leaders and raid their homes. Did we know that we were lying about drugs? Of course we did. That's the problem I have with this. We need to, we need to have home grow in New Jersey, which is not even an issue for recreational, I want that for medical patients, but I do want home grow. We should be able to grow this with our tomatoes. I met a multiple sclerosis patient yesterday who could not afford her medical cannabis. So home grow would help this woman. She gets a dollar a day from the state. She's dying from multiple sclerosis. She has two years to live. She's suffering, and she can't get it. So the medical program's a failure. Recreational cannabis will help her. Thank you. "They shall grow not old as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them." Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, are there any Saraville residents who would like to speak? Any, any, any at this time? Okay. Jeff Oaks, please. Jeff, if you would state your name and the town you live in, please?
Jeffrey Oaks, 60 Pemberton Avenue.
What town?
I'm sorry, 60 Pemberton Avenue, Oceanport, New Jersey.
Okay.
You may remember me from last week. I've done this a million times. I'm not a million, I'm over-exaggerating. But I'm not used to coming out to lobby for recreational cannabis. But in this case here, for some reason, Saraville kind of sticks out. Maybe it's because of some of the comments that your chief made that I don't agree with, as my friend Lefty mentioned. And on that note, I would like to address a graph that many prohibitionists use. I think it's the Colorado Rocky Mountain Highway Drug Enforcement Agency, whatever it is. And that cannabis-related fatal, auto fatalities have risen. Keyword, "related." There is no causation for any of this because it's been admitted by law enforcement that the testing, and they use this for a reason why it shouldn't be legalized, because there is no way to gauge the drunk dri, or the, excuse me, quote, "drugged driving" when it comes to cannabis. I find that problematic because, like my friend Lefty said, the prohibition itself is unconstitutional to begin with. So we're basically back to an innate compound, not much more damaging than caffeine. We all see what, how that affects people on the road in the morning. I got an issue with that, but we don't, we don't document all the chemicals that we use, all the addictions, physical addictions we have. We don't count them, but for some reason, we as a society are ridiculously hung up on cannabis. I've been using it for four years, okay? I can stand up here and talk about it, how it makes you feel, how it helps you, how it relaxes you, whatever. The recreation folks, they can't come up here and speak openly like I can. I have an advantage, and I can tell you, it hasn't ruined my life. I'm not going out to buy heroin. Okay, this idea that there's some sort of gateway going on, it's nonexistent. Non-existent. If it were, the very program that I was in, that is run by our Board of Health, would certainly be on top of all the heroin addicts that are coming out of their medical program. But it's nonexistent. As far as whether you want it in town, whether you think it's gonna be safe for the roadways, whether the children are gonna get it, it's really a moot point because it's here already. It's here. So why would you inconvenience your citizens? You make them drive an hour away? Or a half hour away? It's pointless. This stuff isn't our lives. It's coming here. And I actually applaud you folks tonight for even having, forming a committee because most towns just, a lot of towns don't want to have anything to do with it. You guys are willing to hear what people have to say, and I commend you for that, and I hope that that the committee would do its homework when it comes to health. I mean, the chief, the chief made a comment last meeting, and I missed his presentation, but I watched it on video. He made a comment that marijuana causes lung cancer, okay? That's laughable to me, and it should be laughable to the whole council and to the committee because we've already been here last week, and we recognize it as having medical value. Okay, cigarettes cause cancer, lung cancer, not cannabis. Okay, I have cancer. I have a host of doctors that recommend cannabis for me. Only one recommends it, writes it, but the rest of them have conversations about it.
Jeff, no, 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 you're not up yet. I just, one minute notice.
Sure.
So.
I'm almost done. I think I'm done anyway. You get the gist of my.
Jeff, I'm not, I'm not rushing you. I just don't, I don't cut people off.
No, no.
So take your time, but if you could start concluding.
I think I kind of just made it there. I just think that a lot of communities are overacting. And like I said, I stand here before you as a display of someone who has been successfully using medical cannabis, not recreational cannabis, and I don't see the problem. I haven't had any problems. My wife's the first one to tell you that things work pretty well in my, in the house when I'm comfortable and I have my cannabis to treat my cancer. And with rec, the word recreational cannabis, the word recreation shouldn't even be next to cannabis. It shouldn't even be next to the word marijuana. Marijuana is a racial term. It shouldn't even be used anymore. So recre, recreational cannabis, okay? We give it the idea that it's fun. It's something that somebody does for fun, okay? Let's get it straight, okay? People that want this legalized for recreation, they're athletes. They run marathons, okay? I stood out on my sidewalk. The Long Ranch Marathon comes right past my house. You wouldn't believe how many runners came by, saw me smoking, and wanted some. Of course, I can't share it with them because it's against the law. But it's, it's going to be mainstream. It's not going to be looked at like alcohol. After a while, it's gonna be very normal. It's gonna be a health supplement. CBDs are all, all over the shelves probably in town here already. The only cannabinoid that's missing is THC. That's the only one. It's the only one. And I can tell you, when it comes to driving, it's no different than any other medication. Actually, it's, it has less of an effect on your ability to, to drive a car or to do any type of work. It has, it's less. I've, I've, I've got cancer. They tried to put my, every drug in the book, you know? It's non-toxic. Water is more toxic. We could sit here, I could start smoking, and everybody else could drink, in the room, drink water. I could continually smoke. The people that are drinking water would be dead before me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff King, please. Jeff, if you'd state your name and where you live for the record, please?
Thank you.
I think you turned it off, Jeff.
Okay. Oh, all right. Thank you. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me. My name is Jeffrey King. I live in Borough of Eaton Town, very close to Red Bank. I know what you did on councilor. I appreciate it very much. So as far as adult use, responsible adult use cannabis and social use cannabis, spiritual use, I'm 100% in favor of individual liberty and person's right as an American to make that choice as long as they're not harming anyone else. And that's what we're talking about tonight, in my opinion. Why, why would we ban it and why wouldn't we welcome it? Well, my friends have spoken about racial justice. Lefty talked about Harry Ann Slinger and the Ehrlichman quote. And now we can add the sheriff of Bergen County to that here in New Jersey. We all heard that story, and we know he was forced to resign because of many hateful statements he made, and one of them was about cannabis and racist. So I think that's disgusting. That's really something that all of the sheriffs in New Jersey need to disavow. I didn't hear Sheriff Sean Golden comment on that at all in Monmouth County, and I was listening. I was hoping he would make a statement about that, just to disavow that kind of attitude. I'm not accusing anyone of that, but I think it's prudent to disavow it because it was a shock to hear what he said. No one expected it. So I think trust in law enforcement right now is, it's, it's tough for cannabis consumers to submit to this. It's really, it's time to move on and change the way we're doing things. Law enforcement hasn't really led us down the path of love and peace and compassion lately. Why else? I compare it to alcohol. It's not really ideal that we have people over-consuming alcohol and making bad choices and bad behavior. So we try to regulate it as best we can, and it's a work in progress. Since the federal government ended prohibition, the states have done what they wanted, and communities have done what they wanted to a certain extent. And here we are with alcohol laws all inconsistent, and the results are inconsistent. But on the roads, it's unsafe because alcohol is legal. We have safety issues on our roads. We all agree. So how do we address that? Should we make all alcohol legal again and put alcohol consumers in handcuffs? Especially ones of the political persuasion or the race that we don't agree with? We could do that. We could make it zero tolerance. DWY if you have any trace of alcohol on your breath. I wouldn't really think that that would be inconsistent. Think that would be actually consistent, and then cannabis consumers could commiserate with the alcohol consumers and say, yeah, the government really is taking care of our safety here at the expense of our liberty, of course. Why else? Well, there's a lot of zones in this town where we could make this work. Compared to anywhere in any other state, the zoning fits here. Absolutely. This is not a small municipality. It's diverse. The economic incentives are so many that I don't even care to argue for that. That's, I'm not in the business. I'm more for home-growing rights, actually. That would empower the people, the ultimate liberty.
Jeff, you have about a minute left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Why else? Home delivery is, is in the bill. Now, Governor hasn't signed it yet, of course. It hasn't even been debated yet, but right now, the draft has home delivery, so you're gonna miss out on all the benefits, and everyone's gonna be able to have access to it anyway. So really, whether or not you have it in, in the municipality isn't a paramount thing. If you ban it, the consumers will still have their opportunity to consume it. So you know, you're gonna do what you need to do for the residents, and that's altogether fitting and proper. Just please, make the decision in an enlightened, educated, compassionate, loving, forward-thinking way. Don't be in a panic. Don't be fearful. Don't be ignorant. Listen to what the residents say, though. We, we had this discussion last time, and I really do agree that the people, not the mob, but really, after a fair, open discussion, you'll know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Stephen? Mayor?
Mayor, council, thank you very much. My name is Stephen Reed, the mayor of Point Pleasant Beach. Thank you so much for having me.
Stephen, Mayor, can you pull that mic a little bit towards you?
Yes.
Don't pull the mic. Okay, sorry.
All right. How about now?
Much better.
You know it says, "Do not touch." I don't want to get in trouble.
All right, well.
Well, oh, yeah, I know. She looked at me. I got it. I got it. I know, I know who runs this, this, this meeting here. Again, first of all, Stephen Reed from Point Pleasant Beach, I just want you to know that Point Pleasant Beach was the first town to say no to any dispensaries. And I like to stop calling dispensaries because they want to make them sound like they're really good, you know, nice and clean. It's a great thing. They are pot shops. I'm dealing with some people right now in Newark, in certain areas of this state, that they don't want pot shops in their town. This is not about medical, but I do have to warn you, what's going on right now with the new bill, and it hasn't been out there yet, and it hasn't been heard, but basically, it's a way that the medical can get in. Medical comes in, and then they can also sell recreation at the same time in the same facility. So I think you need to look at that as well. All I want to do is say to you before I start my talk here is, how is this going to make your community better? Just think of that. When you make a decision on this today or any other day, how is that gonna make, how is having recreation marijuana in your town gonna make it better? How is it gonna be best for your community? So, you know, the governor was elected. He said he wanted to legalize recreation marijuana. My council, we said, well, we don't want it in our town. And because, why? Family-friendly town. We have a boardwalk. We have a beach. We have a downtown. We have two schools. We're very proud of, you know, we, we basically talk about our town, family-friendly town, so we didn't want that to basically change that. We didn't want people to say, hey, let's go to Point Beach and get, you know, buy our marijuana. I'm worried about DUIs, and we better worry about DUIs. I'll get to that in a second. So right now, I am the David in the Goliath fight. The group that I represent, New Jersey Ramp, I am the executive director, responsible approaches of marijuana policy. It just so happened that we said no, and then I was able to get a chance to talk to Kevin Sabat, who is the head of SAM, and their sister group is New Jersey Ramp, and other states where we are fighting this. Let's talk about marijuana for a second. Years ago, I'm sure we've always, much of us part, took a little bit, right? And the problem there is that we had like five, maybe 10% THC. Now, forget it. It's up there, 30%, 40%, and that's just weed. And no one's smoking anymore. It's the edibles. The edibles is where the problems are, okay? And I want to talk about the commercialization of marijuana. It's gonna happen in this state. It's happening in Colorado. What's happening is the edibles. The edibles can, your THC in the edibles, that's what makes you high, 80 to 90 to 99%. That's what you don't want because it's all, it's all, it's all driven to, for the children. It's all about children. Let's get gummy bears. Who eats gummy bears? Children do. Who eats pop tarts? The children do. Who wants a soda? Who wants a lollipops? The edibles is where this is going. That's where the THC is. That's where the people are getting high. Children right now in your school are getting high, are jeweling with oil that has marijuana oil, and the teachers don't even know it. We have a major, major problem right now in this state, and it's gonna get worse. The black market's never going anywhere. It's gonna get worse. They see it in Colorado. They can't even control it in Colorado. Even some of these shops are illegal. They just opened up. There's not enough people to go out and inspect all these shops. I'm worried about the children, and I think you should too. Colorado, first-time youth pot use has gone down, meaning the younger kids are starting to smoke now. And what happens? You get them young, right? And they'll be smoking for a while. We're not even talking about jobs testing. What's gonna happen if you're a police officer? What's gonna happen if you're a teacher? What's happening if you're a bus driver? What happens if you're a blue-collar worker in a union working on a scaffold room, right? Or, or some kind of a truck? And you get high on Saturday, the THC's in your blood. On Monday or Tuesday, when you get tested, you, you will lose your job, and you will never get another job after that. And I'm talking about any kind of job that tests you. If you're a nurse, you think you're gonna lose your job, you're gonna lose it, and you're never gonna get it back. That's a problem. And I know that the people in the inner city are worried about it because what's happening is people like my town and other towns, we have over 60 towns now, and some towns are just sitting back, saying, well, let's see what happens. We, we're not gonna have it here. Of course not, but I want to see what the bill says. Well, you have 180 days if this bill gets approved. And the reason why they're doing that, so people, you know, if they want to set up a shop somewhere, you give them enough time to set up a shop, okay? But so, I'm gonna tell you right now, you better react. This is coming. This is coming quick. It was supposed to be voted on yesterday, and it's gonna be voted on within the next couple of weeks. This Senate president, this governor, this speaker wants to get it done, recreation. And I feel bad for the home growers because they, they don't have that.
No, you don't. Don't address us. Address the committee. They're trying to take my medicine away. I'm a cancer survivor.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
So anyway, another thing.
You're diabetic. You should take your medicine.
Okay, AAA? AAA problems? AAA is, is one of our groups that is, is part of New Jersey Ramp. They are worried about DUIs. They've seen it go up in Colorado. They've seen accidents and deaths, and let me tell you something, your insurance is gonna go sky-high. That's AAA. That's facts. But another thing, more black and brown minority children are being arrested right now in Colorado where it's legal. Why? Because even there, you can't have, there's a certain amount you can have. It's a real problem. It is a real problem, and, and there's some people who will tell you other things.
Mayor, hold on a minute. I'm gonna ask the members of the audience to be respectful because people were respectful when you spoke, and it reciprocates here. Otherwise, I'll ask you to leave the room. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was also at a, I spoke to about over 100 people who are on the front lines dealing with addiction, police officers, freeholders, mayors. with addiction, police officers, freeholders, mayors down in Cape May County today. So I've been all over the state, and I've had a chance to speak, just like I had a chance to speak up in Union Township. Union Township, Democrats, they're like, they're very nervous. Because three of them on the council like it, two of them don't. So you know what they did? They put it up for a vote. But they didn't have enough information. After I had a chance to speak, we had a pro, we had a con. And let me tell you something, at the end of it, people, I think their minds are made up, they're going to be voting no on that. So today, I dealt with, I talked with addicts, I talked with doctors and nurses, I dealt with people, I talked with people on the front lines, prevention. And I know that some people will say I'm wrong, but addicts will say it's a gateway drug, that's where they started, and that's where it ended up. And the doctor said today, one in 10, not everyone's going to be addicted, of course not, but one in 10 do get addicted. And the problem is, if you have it on your street, you're not just going to have one shop. Why would you have one? You're talking about $12 million just to open up your own shop, okay? $12 million. Remember now, it's illegal for federal government, so this is all cash. You're not going to a bank to get a loan. This is all cash. So you have to have cash to open up one of these shops. Now, when you do that, how are you going to make your money back with just one or two shops? You've got to have as many shops as you can. You've got a great town here. I see your roads right here, people can drive right in, get their marijuana and drive right out. So that's a real problem. I think you should think about that when you make a decision. But again, if I can answer any questions, I will, if you would like to do that.
Mayor, this forum was a listening forum?
Wonderful.
I appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Are there any other residents or non-residents that would like to speak? Come on up. Go ahead.
Hi. So my name's Aubrey, I live in Sarerville. I was born and raised. So this is the first time I ever spoke.
Aubrey, what's your last name?
Conway. This is the first time I ever spoke at anything regarding recreational, because it's not a secret, the whole town knows and the whole state knows. My priority is medical, strictly medical, the medical program. And I know that we're not talking about that tonight. But I am here just because I wanted to get the, I just wanted to gauge the information that was being shared tonight. I really didn't plan on speaking, so I apologize for my appearance right now, but it pains me to hear the misinformation. I just want to remind people that even though my priority is solely medical, the health benefits don't come with the card. Just because you have a medical card doesn't mean that it's, you know, you're getting the health benefits as opposed to not having the card. I also want to, you know, I know that you guys know this because you live here. People are already using recreational marijuana, every single day, everywhere, in Sarerville, everywhere. And this targeting children in Colorado? I can tell you that I've traveled to other states regarding the medical program and seen their programs to provide feedback to this state. And it's not targeting children. I don't know where that's coming from, but that's not true. It's not targeting children. Edibles are a way to consume cannabis. That's it. Nobody's targeting children. And it pains me to hear some of these figures, it doesn't cost $12 million in cash to open a dispensary, not a pot shop. They are not pot shops, they are dispensaries. No matter if it's medical or recreational, they are dispensaries. That is what they are called. And it is insulting to hear them referred to as a pot shop. I understand this outdated idea of like a Cheech and Chong situation of stoners just out of control. And I just, even though we don't even have a recreational program in New Jersey yet, that's a really far-fetched idea to think that every single person that is already recreationally using marijuana would be now just, it is the Sodom and Gomorrah of marijuana in the Sarerville streets. That is a ridiculous way of thinking. It is outdated and it is not true. It's happening already, and to be honest, I can tell you from personal experience, I was raised without a mother because of alcohol. She never smoked weed in her life. What is the real gateway drug here? Is it cannabis? Because I'm telling you, that's not true. And I know several recovering addicts that have used cannabis in their recovery, just like you can now use it in opiate recovery to help you get off these other things. This is not my opinion, this is what the state says. The state says, if you have an opiate problem, you qualify to use cannabis. I understand it's medically, but that's the truth. You can use it now, that is okay with the state, if you're getting off harder drugs. So to regard it as something that would help you get off something, and then at the same time speak out of the other side of our mouth and say it is a gateway, is dangerous. That is dangerous information and it is misinformation. And I just want to clear that up, that, you know, I understand that there is an old way of thinking, whether it comes to Sarerville or it doesn't, that's true. People are going to get it anyway. They can go buy it wherever. But to, you know, base it on misinformation, I don't agree with that. Even though I am usually very hands-off recreational and the policies, this is the town I live in. And I just want to see you guys provided with facts and not fear-mongering. And I feel like that's what's happening, and I feel like it's unfair to a program I'm not even part of. I'm not even involved in recreational. But I do speak at several levels of government for medical. And it's just crazy the way the fear-mongering is going on here. It's not right. So I just want you to keep that in mind, that that word gateway is really the problem. I don't, it's not, I just spoke last night at an event on how to talk to your children about medical marijuana. And I assure you that people are thinking of the children. And maybe if we had less parents on opiates and less parents drinking alcohol, maybe that would be really putting the children first. Because that is a crisis. In our state, in our country, there is an opiate crisis. We have tried for how many years to manage this crisis? We need to try something else. And I think we need to just approach it differently. We cannot lose more people. People my age are dying every single day. I can't tell you how many friends I've lost from it. So I'm happy to talk to you guys, you know, regarding medical or anything like that. I know that's not why we're here tonight, and I appreciate you guys hearing comments, I really do, because I've spoken in a lot of towns, and I've seen people and councils just completely disregard it. So I appreciate that you are hearing people about it. And I just, I thank you for that. But I just want you to make sure that you're getting fact and not fear-mongering. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any, are there any residents who would like to speak? Are there any non-residents? Yes, come on up. Please state your name and the town you live in.
My name is Mike Vinzilios. I live in Brick, New Jersey.
Mike, how do you spell your last name?
I'll spell it. It's V-I-N-T-Z-I-L-E-O-S.
L-E-O-S?
Correct.
And you're Brick?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Just like Aubrey spoke, I too was not planning on speaking. My fellow patients here, they do a good enough job of articulating themselves. After hearing what the mayor said, it's very hard to just sit back and be silent. He is obviously someone who never walked into a dispensary because of the way he would just slander it by talking about it, by calling it a pot shop. That's like me calling Rite Aid the 11th step, 11th step to death. It would be the same kind of a comparison. Considering that, things in Rite Aid and Walgreens and those things are pretty much 12 steps to death if you abuse, okay? So I know you don't want to hear anything medical, but I associate cannabis with recreational and medical. I think they're one in the same kind, so to speak. Let me explain why. There's a lot of people who cannot afford to be on the program. It's a real issue. It's a real issue that maybe none of you are aware of or you see in your daily life, but it is a real issue. And when you don't have money for things and you have a full-time job, you kind of can't miss even a day's pay to even get to an appointment, to get to a doctor, to pay a high fee. And having access, recreational, to cannabis would be the best way to provide medicine for all people. And that's a stance of compassion, okay? And I know you don't want to hear medical, but as I just stated, recreational to me is medical. You're providing people a safe access, a safe alternative avenue to something that is non-addictive, something that cannot kill you, you're not going to, can't overdose on it. Sorry, these may be things that nobody wants to hear or other people who have spoke. You don't want to, I've heard gateway, it's a gateway off of things, okay? I've had, I had opiate abuse history, and I'm glad to say that that is all in my past, and that is all pretty much with good, the will, the focus, and the cannabis was the X-factor. Provided, the thing that I needed to get off of, the gateway off of pills, all these things that are killing people daily. So these are the, these are the real, this is how the real things tie together. For me, that's what it provided for me. That's what it could provide for somebody else, especially somebody who cannot provide to be on a program that's heavily priced to get involved in. It's a lot to go to a dispensary, all these things. Recreational, passing some sort of, providing recreational for people, for all types of people, that stance of compassion, instead of saying imaginary children, all these imaginary people that, who are we talking about? I eat gummy bears. I eat brownies, I eat pop tarts. These are all things I like to consume, I consume them daily. I ate a pop tart in the morning. I didn't know pop tarts were only advertised and directed or marketed for kids. I didn't know that. Gummy bears, I went to Wild Run, got gummy bears yesterday, you know? I don't know what to say, other than it's hard to sit back and hear people say things because they have an agenda, or it provides a means to their ends or something, you know? Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mike. Come on up there.
Good evening, how are you? My name is Angela Colandrea, I live at 15 Ridge Avenue in Sarerville.
She can't hear you, Angela. She can't, Terry, the clerk, can't hear you.
My name is Angela Colandrea, and I live at 15 Ridge Avenue in Sarerville.
Wait a minute. You need to spell, we have to take it slow. So how do you spell your last name?
Did you want me to say my address again?
Go ahead.
So I'm a patient, I really don't come out to represent for recreational, but I think something that we should realize for all New Jersey residents, that there's only a certain list of qualifying conditions that would qualify people to get into the program in New Jersey. So if you live in New Jersey and you have an illness or something wrong with you that the state doesn't recognize that you are eligible for a medical card, and you need that medicine and opiates or other options don't work for you, then what do you do? You know? You're forced to buy black market or leave the state to go to Colorado or California or somewhere that they're able to obtain their medicine or another medical program that will recognize them. Not every medical program in every state is the same. There are many conditions that New Jersey doesn't recognize. So those people would be forced to either use pills, and then they could create another addiction and have other issues that we've already talked about, or they could leave the state. And we wouldn't want our residents to feel like, you know, they're not welcome here because of the medicine that they're choosing. So I think it's important to remember that medical and recreational cannabis is for medicine and has medicinal properties. So, you know, it's not just about like that stoner mentality. We have to remember the people that aren't recognized that should be patients as well. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, hon. Are there any other comments? Any other comments? All right, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Your testimony is now on the record of the borough. And we are, apparently, we had a conflict tonight with the Board of Education, and they had a parent-teacher night at the UES School. So we're looking to set another date, which hasn't been set yet. But it's an important topic for the people of Sarerville, and I thank everyone for coming out tonight. So with that, is there any other business? All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Councilwoman President Limbo? Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Nice, Dean. Hey, how's your wife doing down there?
I read it. Read it.